At only five minutes after seven, I'd like to call this meeting, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, to order. We have regrets from Trustee Land and we have expectations of Trustee Tucker, that she should be here shortly. I'd like to start by acknowledging that we're all signatories of Treaty Five and we reside in the traditional territory of the Nishtou way as a Cree Nation and we are all Treaty people. I'd like to get a motion for approval of the agenda, please. Trustee Brady, Trustee Lichot, any amendments?
It was circulated yesterday, the policy of Treaty Amendment.
Yeah. It's in the agenda though, right?
12.1?
Yeah. So just everyone note that it was added after the first circulation.
Okay.
We don't need an amendment for that, right? Just to approve it as circulated? Anything else? All those in favor? Carried. Adoption of the minutes of the Regular Board meeting of June the 12th. Mover. Trustee Olivera, secondor, Trustee Fitzpatrick. Has everyone had a chance to review? Any comments or changes? All those in favor? Carried. Delegations and presentations, R.D. Parker, F1 Project. You guys are up.
The hardware.
So as this school board does, we went down to Austin to compete in the F1 schools' US National Opens. We placed six out of 20 there and we won the scrutineering award.
So what the scrutineering award is, is it means our car followed the rules, the most out of the other cars, so the specifications they gave us at the start of the year. Our car was based around them and so we won this award because out of all the cars, ours was the best in that aspect. Although we did lose our races, we got 1.6 seconds around for race times and yeah, we didn't win that aspect, but overall we were six out of 20.
So what kind of trip did you have?
It's a long one. Too long.
It looked like you had lots of fun from your Instagram page. I followed it after last time you were here. It was fun watching your trip.
Well, we didn't need to explain that.
Yeah. I was, they were fixing the car and I was just posting. They said at the beginning of the competition, there would be an award for the most posted and then there ended up not being an award for the most posted.
It was really just being able to follow it though. Like, there's a difference between knowing you're down there and actually knowing what you guys are doing. And the scrutineering award was pretty exciting to see you get. So how about the other cars? They all look pretty much similar or was there anything?
So their cars were a lot faster than ours. Some of them, like, were really fast. Like, our time 1.6, they got like 1.1 or 1.2. So we were a little behind on the speed, but did okay in other parts.
Anybody else?
Do you have any trouble getting across the border with your material supplies?
Oh, you've got to focus.
Yeah, we had no issues really crossing the border and going back because everything we have was properly contained and the equipment that we had was properly stowed and nothing was, everything was compliant with US Customs Regulations for importing and exporting it between the countries.
So I'll start this off. I had a great experience following you down there. We met a lot of teams, especially we met a nice team from Mexico that was there racing. We met teams not only competing in the F1 competition, but in the Jaguar 4x4 as well. We got to see some cool car designs. We got to see a Ferrari, I think it was.
Yeah, it was Ferrari, 458 Spider.
So it was a fun time.
It was very fun. People down there were super nice. There were some teams that you could tell that they were there to have fun, like us, but then there was also the other teams who were ranked higher than us, were there for business and they wanted to win. But they're still super nice when you talk to them.
We'd like to thank this, oh, sorry.
They're trying to hit the Worlds, right?
Yeah.
So where's that this year?
That's in Singapore.
So technically, we can go to Worlds, but it's really expensive.
I'd like to-
So what, top 10 classified to go to Worlds or not?
No.
It's, because our team was one of the only two Canadian teams and I think the three placing teams get to go to Worlds, although there was only two Canadian teams, so we had the chance to.
Yeah.
World qualifiers then.
Yes. So I'd like to thank the school board for all their contribution to us. If you'd like to get a head start, we're still taking donations for next year.
Congratulations on that scrutineers award. That's a, that is in fact a tough one to win.
Yeah, it was very funny because Mr. Caldwell was just sitting at the table and he was like, "Guys, I don't think we're gonna get an award." And then right after he said that, they're like spirit wolves for the scrutineering award. It was, it was really good. It was funny. They all started laughing.
And the car looks great. Congratulations.
You did job again.
Thank you. Thank you for you guys responding.
So thanks for coming in and telling us about it and thanks for posting stuff.
Any other questions?
I have one more.
Yeah.
Did you learn something about the other cars that you might try to do next year in major classes?
Yes.
Especially like our wings, they're really thick because we misread, or the rules. They said, we thought they said like 1.5 minimum for the millimeters for the thickness of the wing, but it's 1.5 at its location, so the thickest it, the MAC, the minimum in one spot has to be 1.5. So next time we can make our wings pretty much like a blade.
Did the wheels perform as you expected?
They did. We had a trouble that one of our wheels was smaller when they did scrutineering, so we had to chop that wheel up and put on a different one, but they held up and they raced amazingly.
So plans for next year?
Definitely.
For you guys.
We're losing our team manager here.
Well, the idea is still for them to graduate, so it's okay. Well, that's awesome, you guys.
Thank you.
Next, we have early literacy intervention with Ms. Donna Dravitt and you have a tough act to follow.
I know, we have a very tough act to follow. All right, it's not as exciting as the cars, but it's our early literacy intervention program. Basically, what it is, it's, we have our ELI teachers and they pull out students in groups of three or four and they do a very intensive program with these students with reading and writing, vocabulary, working on words. And they keep them for a certain amount of time and basically the idea is to take them from where they are, take them over that plateau so that when they transition back into the classroom, out of the ELI program, that they will be able to be successful on their own and continue and have less difficulty when it comes to reading and writing and doing other literacy activities in the classroom. So basically, it's not replacing the classroom instruction. This is something that is in addition to what the classroom teacher is already doing. It's very fast-paced and a big part of it is student attendance and also the students have take-home books that they have to take home every night and read that they've done and it's every day for a half hour that they're taken out. So basically, what we have here, let's see if it goes. So the goal is to lift the literacy achievement of students who are not achieving grade level expectations in reading and basically build up their competency so they can be more successful. And then, there we go. What we have is last year, our only full-time school for ELI all day was Wapeneck. This year, we had a very high need right across the board for a waiting list. So Burtwood, Wapeneck, and Juniper were all full-time ELI. Deerwood was .25 to .5 and Westwood and Riverside, they stayed as .5 ELI for us. So if we're looking back at 2015, 2016, basically in grade one, they were able to seize 62 out of the 273 students. So they actually reached 22.7% of students in grade one. They're able to reach 22.3% of grade two students in the schools and 19% of the grade three. So the total population they were able to reach out of the 759 students was 162. The reason for the transition from reading recovery to this was with reading recovery, you'd have your students, but you'd have them for the whole year and as with grade ones, this, they're in their groups of three to four and we're able to meet the needs of more students and have more groups come in and out of the program so that we can make, help students become more successful. So looking at the breakdown of it, for our grade ones in 2015, 16, 66% of our grade one students moved up four or more reading levels. 66% of our grade twos moved up four more. Grade threes, usually when they get into grade three, that's usually the critical grade of if they're gonna make it or break it later on in education. So for students to move up two or more reading levels in grade three is usually something pretty big and in 2015, 16, 67% of them actually moved up. So my first year was the 2016, 2017 school year and as you can see from the stats there, we were able to reach 161 students out of the 768, which was only 21% of the population. It was after this year that Wapeneck was added by Juniper and Burtwood to have a full-time ELI as well because at the end of this, of this season, we saw 187 students that were in need of the program, but we weren't able to get to them because just due to the number of staff we have and it's really hard to be able to, basically our waiting list was more than what we were able to serve throughout the year. But our breakdown was actually very promising because 68% of our grade ones went up four or more reading levels. 67% of our grade twos went up four or more and 83% of our grade three students, so 30 of them that were in the program, moved up two or more reading levels. So we had very good results. Looking at this year, this is now that we have had three full-time schools and then three half-time schools, we're actually able to meet 187 students' needs. We hit 25% of our grade one to three population this year. As you can see, our waiting list is shorter, but we still have a high need for students. We still have 88 grade one students that were in need of the program. We just couldn't get to them. 22 for the grade twos and 21 for the grade threes. So even though we were able to help 187 students, there was still 131 that we couldn't get to. So next year, we can hopefully get those numbers down. The breakdown for this year was actually really good. 71% of our 49 students in grade one moved up four or more reading levels. 57% of our grade twos, 38 students went up four or more and 75% of our grade threes, 39 students went up two or more reading levels. So overall, it was really good. Just so that I didn't take up a whole bunch of time, just to look at the stats, basically in the chart that you're looking at here, when I was doing the Excel for it, you're not allowed to put the letter grades because the reading level goes from A to Z. Unfortunately, with Excel, you can't do the A to Z. It has to be a number on the side. So basically, one would be A, two would be B, and so on. So the blue is where students at Burtwood, where they entered the ELI program. Then we get to the orange that shows when the students exited. So usually if they're in the program, some will be in for six weeks, some will be in for eight weeks. It just depends because sometimes you'll have students that will just take off and leave someone from the group behind. The big part of this is to be able to group the students together. So groups are changing all the time. So we've had some students exit out in December, some in January, some in May. And basically, our gray line is where the students are at the end of the year. So if we were to look at the students at the very end, basically they came in, so let's, they came in there and by the end of the year, they were, they had still moved up quite a bit and that student actually came in in May. I believe it was like May, the second week of May that they joined the program and they were still able to go up three reading levels in that short amount of time. So if we have a look a little bit closer to see their increases in levels, you will see there are three students there that we don't see any growth at all. Two of them moved away and one was actually referred to for resource. We found there's other issues. But if you look across the board, our average is at least four levels that students are going up. We have some that have gone up eight reading levels in the course of being in the program. So we have had a lot of, a lot of success shown. If we go to Deerwood's data, it's the same thing. The reddish color is when they join the program. The orange is when they exit out and then the brownish color is when they're leaving the program. And you can see from that, that the stats, they basically, they speak for themselves of where these students are coming in and the fact that they are showing incredible growth while they're in the program and then continuing when they transition back into the classroom. And here's our increases in levels. We have some that have gone up nine levels, seven, six. Some of the ones here where it says they've only gone up one level, those are some of the students that came in mid-May, but we, because it was year-end, we still have to do the assessments year-end to exit them out and that's how, that's why some of those are a little bit lower. But overall, the picture, it just shows so greatly how much improvement these students have. This is our Juniper, our full-time one and once again, it's an amazing graph of how they go across. You'll see the ones that where it's, the three lines are all the same. That's the same, that's the exact same example. They came in in May, but they, the students need at least four weeks to be able to start to get into the program and be able to start to show some improvement. So the ones that have the straight line across, that's the reason for that. And if we look at the levels of growth, it's ranging right from one level, reading level up to some in the grade two range went up 10 levels over the course of the program. Riverside's data, same thing. You can just see the difference of how they're going from the first student. They start off by reading at a B. End of the year, they're already at a level I, which is putting them into where they need to be for grade level to be able to go into grade two. So it's helping these students catch up and here's our, our chart of how many levels that they're going up. And every student that has been through this program has shown growth. The only ones that we haven't seen growth in is ones that, a couple of the charts where it went below is because the student moved away and so when you enter the data in, it shows the line below. But other than that, there has been, Wapeneck is, the stats for Wapeneck were astounding this year. We had so many students that came in at level A in grades one, grades two, and grade three and lots of them are basically at or almost at grade level to be able to go into the next grade. They're ranging levels L to N and some are even a little bit higher. So it's, it's incredible, especially we do, Wapeneck is our school that has a very, well, lots of our schools have high indigenous population, but that is one of our targets is to help these students and they seem to be scoring lower on lots of our, lots of the provincial testing. This is one example of showing where they are excelling greatly. Westwood, same thing. They, they're, the growth not as astounding as Wapeneck was, but the students are progressing at such a great range. Like, some of them, 10 levels. Our average for Westwood was actually three reading levels, which is pretty good considering that it's only half-time. So the way it works out is, I've been talking about reading levels, you've seen it as numbers. These gradients have changed a lot over the years. Before kindergarten was A to C. Now, the way that Fontes and Pennell talks about it is that kindergarten, if they're in an A or entering into an A throughout kindergarten, that they're doing good. Grade one is usually where you see the biggest level of growth and their range for them is A to J. For grade two, levels H to M. Grade threes, the start of the year, they should be around the level L by the end, hopefully P. And if, if we're being as successful as we have been, they're gonna be higher. Grade four, O to T and grade five, and it goes higher and higher. The reason I want to show you this is I just want to show you an example from one of our schools. This is a grade four classroom at one of our schools and you will see that in June, the average reading level is around R and S and we have some going into T. I would say probably 95% of the students that are on this list, either in grade one, two, or three, have been in the ELI program. And right now, these, this is what their scores are in grade four. And there are some that are a little bit lower and in those cases, lots of these students are getting extra support from resource and there are other issues that are going on that they are getting support for. But at the end of grade four, to have the majority of the class at this level, this is really setting them up for success as they go through the rest of their education. Yes, and the gains are being sustained and they're continuing. Lots of times, we, we do have a lot of transparency that does happen in our, in our district and we have had a couple of students, as I was going through the stats, where they came in, they were in the program, they left in the middle of the program because they moved away, then they came back the year after and they've actually come back almost at the same level and then we've taken them up again and then, but they moved away and then they came back. And there's lots of stuff that, that does happen and we don't have any control over, but to have an example like, like what we saw there, and that's not just the only one, it is happening across all the schools where we're starting to see successes like that and it's really starting to show. Just to show a couple of different examples, part of the literacy intervention that they do is the writing. So the picture on the left is the students, one of the assessments that they do is a sentence is read to the students and they have to try and write it out, how they, how it sounds to them. So this sentence is, I can see the red boat that we are going to have a ride in. In September, the one on the left, that's how the sentence, that's how they wrote it out. After being in the program in May, you can see the difference in their writing and it just, it shows the amazing growth that they've gone through, not only in the reading part, but also in the writing. Another grade one example I have, January, and that one I believe it says, I look at the school and you can see the way the picture looks. A few months later, you can see that they are writing substantially more and there's more detail putting into it. Not just a sentence at the end of the period, but they're actually using exclamation points and there's more going into the writing. So there's more expression being put into it. Looking at the grade two example, in September, on the left, the student had no concept of writing from left to right. Everything was basically all over the place. And this student did stay in the program because they, he fit into a group and he was growing, so he stayed in the program a little bit longer. But you can see in May, the huge difference in his writing because he stayed in the program. To go from getting six writing points out of the 65, all the way up to 49 out of 65. And this is something that will stay with them and will help them continue their growth. And then the last example I have to show you is another grade two example that also shows, and this is between September and December. So as you can see, some students, they excel really fast in the program, some take a little bit longer, but at the end of the day, all of our students that have been going through the program have been showing a lot of improvement and the program is really benefiting them. Anybody have any questions? Yes?
I'm just curious about this waiting list with 131 students on it.
Yes.
Are there any solutions about that? Because if it's so beneficial, it's really sad that-
I know.
-people are sitting on the bleachers wondering, what am I gonna get with that?
I know. Like, right now, currently, we've got five ELI teachers and classroom teachers, they, they have a lot on their plate already. So only solution is, I know it's near impossible, but like more ELI teachers would really help benefit or something to help transition these students because they really need that small group to really help them and give them that success.
I'm just wondering if the Bachelor of Education students at UCN would undertake some kind of volunteer experience where they'd be reading to students in groups or is that like the, something?
That could be a possibility, like, because like with the ELI program, like, some of them are reading recovery trained, some are go through the ELI training. Because as part of it, like for the grade ones to report to the province, there's a series of six tests that the ELI teachers have to do. Every second day, they do a reading record with the students and it's just, it's just constant routine and assessment and it's ongoing and I think that's what's helping the success. But the small group is really what works. But yeah, any solutions that we could find?
Well, if you were education students, I mean, you're in the program, you must be learning some principles of that, that whether they're officially trained or-
Yeah, exactly.
... practice.
Oh, yeah.
Have a habit of reading and if somebody's guiding you through it, that might make it, at least while you're on the waiting list, you're getting something.
Exactly. Absolutely.
Are you noticing, again, like a lot of people say that kids will regress during the two months off in the summer. So when you're coming back and they're, you know, because some of them are all discontinued in June, I'm assuming they're getting-
We do have carryovers, yes.
Yeah. Are you seeing that regression from the eight weeks or so or nine weeks when they're off?
In some, yes, we do. Lots of times, and we do have carryovers, the first thing that happens when we come back in September is that ELI teachers will test those carryovers first and just to see what their levels are. And in some cases, they may have regressed one or two levels. Sometimes it's happened that everyone that they've tested and even though they were in a group in June, in September, all of them have been at a different level. We've had some that have spent time reading and doing work over the summer and we had one that basically took off and went up another three levels over the summer just by the continuous reading. And like when I've been talking with principals and trying to get them to really, really express the importance of reading, talking to parents that students need to read, like even 20 minutes of reading every day makes such a difference for students.
That's why I brought it up, because we got the camera there.
I'm assuming there's an awful lot of material that has to be put-
I'm assuming there's an awful lot of material that has to be put together to support three grades of this with all the variation in skill, or there's going, there's going to be, is that part of a provincial material set, or is this something that has to be assembled?
Literacy intervention? It's actually a box set that, that's purchased, and it's very, like, your teacher's guide, and everything is all laid out for you there, and basically you follow step by step through the program. Lots of times, extra stuff does go in, because all of our ELI teachers have been in the classroom before, and they put their own little touch, like at Wapnek. When she sees the need that they need extra work on something, they finish a lesson early, then they work on something else, and she makes sure that they're building up other skills. All across, all the ELI teachers do that. But yeah, as for the box, and also, you can, you can print them from online, and it's, it's a very set-up program, it's almost like a standardized program, but it's, it goes right in a progression.
Would you use the Fontis and Pennell, that's the system we're using?
Yes.
And there's training involved, but early literacy intervention is a fantastic model. I just, it's a very expensive model for us. It costs us almost four hundred thousand dollars to run that program. So you're aware of the cost that's associated with running that. Worth every penny. How much is that?
Hardwood didn't have
Three hundred ninety-seven thousand. Three hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars? But we moved away from the reading
Which was, which was substantially more expensive than that.
How could that be? That's high-end battery.
No, no, that's, that's the number of employees we have.
That's human resources there, too.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Not just the boxes.
I thought it was the box.
No, no, no.
Each kit is thirty, thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars. So yeah, and the thing is, there's all the different levels, so the majority that we use is the green and the blue, which take us levels A to K, I believe. We also have a red box out of the board office here, so that when ELI teachers, if they find that they need to go a little bit higher level, then they'll, they'll use the box from here. We're also finding that lots of our students are coming in a lot lower as they're entering school than what they did in the past, and we're needing extra help. So a couple of the schools have also ordered what they call an orange booster pack, and basically it covers A to C. And it's just additional lessons to help reinforce the reading levels. So yeah, and it's really, really, it's been very successful for the students. And to see the pride on their faces when they come with their book bag, I read this book, and look what I'm reading now, and giving them that confidence is a very big part of it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. That was great.
Thanks so much.
Of our community and of our hospital.
It would have been a world survey. And I mean, they looked at all types of different things, socioeconomics, you know, all of that. And the one common denominator that they could find as that affected literacy rates was the amount of literature in the home.
Oh, yes, I remember that.
Yes. All the things, I mean, I'm, reading to a child or having a, like, a somewhat literature-rich environment is the biggest impact you will have on their success as a reader.
Wow, seems so easy.
Yeah, but in places that are third world, where it's difficult to get literature.
There's a, who is it, who sends out the books? There's three or four, Delton, there's Oprah Winfrey who does it, and there's somebody else, there's like a whole whack of, I think Melania Trump does that now. They have a book every month delivered to them.
So even kids who lived in very dire conditions, if they were, had the ability to be around literature, a literature-rich environment, which, I mean, doesn't really go with poverty, however, they, they, they seem to do quite well.
Business from a previous board meeting? As usual, we have none. Superintendent of Human Resources and Policy Report.
Hey, the last couple of weeks, I feel like all I've done is eat. I've been to retirement dinners, retirement teas, we've been on the retirement circuit. When teachers retire, it's a big deal, there's lots of stuff that goes on as a result. Currently, as you can see, I have nine positions posted, and I'm pretty confident that of these nine, six will be filled probably within the next three or four days. Again, there are three that are difficult, and are difficult, speech and language pathology, it's been posted for quite some time, difficult to recruit for, very difficult. The Crete Coordinator and Indigenous Perspective Teacher, another difficult one, Lori and I, Lori's looking at maybe doing something different in terms of that delivery of that particular position. Trying to think outside the box a bit, because it is so difficult to recruit for that position. As well as the Choral Music Teacher at Arty Parker, I'm struggling with again. So again, just putting in papers, ECN, trying to network within people that are kind of in that music world, so hopefully, but.
For that one, Nigel, Brandon University?
Yeah, I've sent it to Brandon University School of Music. These positions aren't, there are not a lot of them, but then again, there's not a lot of people who specialize in choral music either, so it kind of, so if you do find somebody who happens to, there's maybe just not a job, I may get lucky and find somebody who's looking for that. Generally, that type of specialization, those people who go into education and take things like choral music, it's their love and their passion, and they really want to do choral music. So, and again, there's an opportunity here at Arty Parker, that would be a full-time position. In many places, it's not. So it is quite appealing if I can just find the right person. And you still have some places finishing up their hiring, and maybe once that all gets, because I, somebody said that there were even places like Brandon had still quite a few positions advertised vacant in their division, so once that kind of the dust settles there, maybe I'll get a candidate for that particular position. I'd like to congratulate Tarb Harwood, he's been awarded the principalship at Deerwood School, and Lisa Brolin, who's been awarded the vice principalship. Bonnie Rempel is going up, there was vacancy at Arty Parker, and Bonnie Rempel's going to the high school as, in the position of a VP. That's everything. I just want to wish everybody a really happy, safe, and fantastic summer, and hopefully the weather keeps up as it's been going. Are there any questions?
No.
No?
Superintendent of Educational Services and Programming.
I provided my report. This report is highlighting some of the things that are going on in the Student Services area of our district. So this year, there were a hundred and, a hundred and seven student assessments by the school psychologist. We have two psychologists, one who is a Point Eight Six employee, and we contract the services of another. Next year, we will be decreasing the contract position to meet budget constraints. The, the need for these assessments is to determine programming as well as individual student educational planning and supports for, for teachers. The speech and language department services were drastically reduced due to a number of reasons in the department. One of our speech language pathologists was away for most of the year, and we have the Student Services Branch from the amount of education and training provide some itinerant service, which we're, we're very grateful for. We also had an EA, we had a couple of EA leaves that affected student therapy. Schools most affected were Wapnek Community School, Westwood, and Deerwood. Fortunately, at this time, our search for an SLP has not been successful, so we're looking at contracting the services. If a replacement is not found, not ideal, but at least our kids will get some therapy. We had sixty-seven students who received direct therapy, thirty-eight pre-referrals, eight pending, and an undetermined number on a waitlist. It was pretty hard to create a waitlist knowing that we weren't able to provide services for, for the students. As of June eighteenth, we had eighty-six educational assistants to support student programming. Additionally to that, we had four speech EAs, SLP EAs. We had an English as an additional language EA at Arty Parker, and a Crete Language EA at Wapnek Community School. So we had ninety-three educational assistants this year in the district. We have not received our feedback from the Student Services Review Report from the previous year. We were expecting that this year, hasn't happened, but I'm guessing with Student Services Branch providing service to not only our district, other districts, that's probably put them behind in their reporting. So expect to see that next year. We completed the grade six writing assessments, and the information was shared out with our grade six teachers. It was a pilot, it's the first year, but it's created a baseline for our student writing so that the district, we have, we have a better profile, we have our, our provincial data, but we also would love to have our own district data. And the reason we chose grade six was that we want to improve grade eight provincial assessments, so it is a better transition for our students when they hit grade nine and they're starting to accumulate credits. The district plan has been shared with administrators, transition team members, and literacy and numeracy lead teachers. District and provincial data has been shared, and will also be shared at the school level during planning days of our school startup. Each group has been assigned a target area to focus in on for the upcoming school year. Three areas that are being targeted are attendance literacy and numeracy, and we'll be collecting some intense data on chronic absenteeism, early intervention, and the impact of full-day kindergarten. And as Jill mentioned, that we're, we're having a hard time filling the Crete Coordinator, Indigenous Perspective Teacher, speech language pathologist also. Today I had the chance to attend the Cops and, Cops and Kids Luncheon, and it was a wrap-up of the program that Cops School Dibert had the students at Juniper School. They were going to present, but they didn't quite finish the project on time, it is finished now. The kids are going to be going in and speaking to their peers, so they're grade seven students, next they're, next year they're grade eight students, so they're going to go back and do their presentations. They use Presio, which is pretty cool, or Prezi, pretty neat, I didn't know how to save it, but they knew how to do that. And the presentations are going to be on healthy relationships online, bullying, cyberbullying, internet safety, so that was, that was good, and Inspector Lewis was also there today. I had a chance to answer the junior high girls' softball tournament last week, which was a lot of fun. I'm proud to say that, and it was the girls that I answered, grade seven and eighth girls, they were absolute role models for good sportsmanship, and I really enjoyed, enjoyed my day, there was no incidents, and I'm, I'm contributing some of that good sportsmanship to the fact that these kids are, are knowing each other as part of the transition program where they're taking their practical arts classes together, so they do know each other, they were, you know, high-fiving each other, and it was really, it was good to see. Lastly, I'd like to wish all our staff and students a very safe and happy summer. Happy promotion to all of our students. I know that tonight is five of our elementary schools' promotion nights. Last night was Juniper's, promotion dance for the grade eights started at seven-thirty, and tomorrow is grad, so congratulations to our grads. Best wishes to those who are retiring or taking on other opportunities, and see everybody else in September. And that's my address.
And T-two daycare?
I received a letter from the executive director of the T-two daycare. They are looking at expanding their programs into the schools. Their focus would be kindergarten, before and after schools because of the, not next year, but the year after, we will not have full-day kindergarten, so we have a year to work on this. So this is now the third group that's interested in moving into our schools. We need to hear back from the province to see if they decided where, if they're going to take up space with the first daycare that needs to relocate. And then we've had Kitty's Northern come forward, and now we have T-two, and we also have a possibility with a project, the Abusidarian Project. So right now, we have a few things on the burner, nothing is definite, but certainly all possibilities, so I just wanted to bring that forward, just to, to share this information.
Any question? Tracy Brady?
Will we have space? Like, where would we have space? Maybe Juniper, we would have space? I'm not sure we'd have space.
We've identified space with the project, the provincial project that is coming in and with this space. So with, right now, we have Deerwood and Juniper who are not at capacity. Brentwood has space. And I'm, you know, if, if speculations are true, there's a chance that we will have a decline in enrollment, with everything that's going on in the community, so this is a full year away, so it gives us, our students some really good options. We probably could allow them to, well. Certainly possible, yeah.
Tracy, Doctor?
I have a question about the speech language. So if we don't find anyone, we end up contracting it, will we still be able to have someone in place for the fall, off of that service, or are we, usually, sir, offering it to them?
We'll be looking probably, hopefully, at early fall. Right now, I think there was another applicant, but really, it, this is a problem that's having across the provinces. I know that MFNERC is actually taking three people from within their organization and sending them to school for three years to Minot, just so that they'll have their own people. No, PRC doesn't have one right now. Yeah, it's.
I don't, does the NRJ have one right now? No?
They haven't for a while, at least. Are you taking a speech language person?
Wow, that's, I think, one of the models that we're
We're not be looking at, which is not ideal, but it's there for the kids.
At least you can have somebody to supervise, see what, what the issue is, there's a, there's a governing body over speech and language. Speech and language pathologist must direct the educational assistance in terms of delivering the program, but there's a quota on how many people they can actually have underneath them to be delivering service. So you kind of need another, like, we have one, full-time one, we need enough, like, at least one more speech and language to supervise those. So whether that can be done in a, I don't know, a teleconference or a telehealth situation, things are going to have to get creative, I think.
Secretary of Treasury's report?
I have nothing formal at this time. The staff here at the board office have been very busy as the year is coming to a close. I would like to thank all the staff for all their efforts as we're getting things nearing completion. During the summer, the doors will be closed here at the board office, but we'll be continuing to prepare the June thirtieth financial statements, as well as do all of the school book audits. We have approximately thirty-five audits to conduct over the summer, so it's not going to stop the board office staff. The election information for school trustee candidates is now posted on our website. Candidate registration for school trustees will begin on June thirtieth and will end September eighteenth, and the election will be on Wednesday, October twenty-fourth. I've also distributed indemnity forms to the trustees for completion. If you could submit by the end of day Friday to ensure that your indemnities are submitted for the proper year, would be appreciated. That's all I have.
Thank you. New business? We have none. With, with regard to collective bargaining, we have a letter sent from the minister's office. Sorry, is it traditional to read the letter or just paraphrase?
No, first, sorry.
Good, because it's a two-page letter. It was sent to all the school boards, and it provides an explanation of what the province's expectations are with collective bargaining, specifically with some of the direction the province has indicated that it's going. Among other things, there's Bill twenty-eight, but the other one is, the province has at least indicated that it's considering going to centralize bargaining. What they've said is they will not be in a position to go What they've said is they will not be in a position to go to centralized bargaining, at least during this term, or, sorry, during this current year. And so basically what they're telling both school boards, and my assumption, I know MTS and I assume TTA as well, is that school boards should proceed with bargaining in the manner in which they have previously done so, and my understanding is we've sent correspondence to the TTA saying that we're ready to appoint bargainers, or the negotiating. So we're proceeding in the manner in which we proceeded in previous bargaining rounds. Pretty sure, yeah, that covers that.
That's kind of just a bit, yeah.
Next, Mathew School Boards Association.
Well, it has the Mark the Clock Memorial Scholarship Award, and included in that is one of the recipients of the award was a northern young woman by the name of Heidi Jenkins. So just a heads up on that. That's all I have for NSVA.
Committee reports. Policy committee?
Policy committee was Wednesday evening, and that was our final meeting for this September. During that meeting, during that meeting, we had opportunity to, to look over a number of our procedural bylaws, one of them being procedural bylaw three eighteen, section eleven, Committee of the Whole, and we are wanting to bring forward some changes to that, to that procedural bylaw. I'm just pulling it up here. Yeah, I had it pulled up to the spot, but I think I lost it.
Yes, and it says you change your agenda, you go right up to the start.
I had it too. So kind of the gist of it is that we thought that for Committee of the Whole, for Committee of the Whole, one of the, speaks to, yeah, Committee of the Whole, often when we go into Committee of the Whole meetings as a group, that we don't often declare when we're actually going in camera, and we thought that we should actually be more specific with that, and we thought the bylaw should speak to that. That there are a number of issues that we, we talk about when we're meeting as a Committee of the Whole, where we actually should be declaring that we are going in camera, so that is a change that we are recommending. The Committee of the Whole meetings are not considered in camera until they're declared as such, so that's a primary change that we're looking for. So my recommendation, my recommendation is that procedural bylaw zero three eighteen, section eleven, Committee of the Whole, be given first reading, given those changes that I have stated.
I see your meeting, Secretary, Trustee, Doctor.
Any discussion?
I'm just wondering if then, if it's, if Committee of the Whole are not automatically in camera, then the meeting, the meeting minutes have to be provided, or all of them that are not declared in camera?
Have to be provided or have to be recorded?
Recorded, provided to the public because they're not in camera. I'm just wondering, that's my question. Because we've never done Committee of the Whole meeting minutes before. I don't know if they've all been in camera, because that's always been a question.
I think it was understood, but I think that that was our point, is that they're not being declared as in camera, so really we're not following procedure unless we state that, so that's why we thought the procedural bylaw should actually reflect that.
Okay, so then the whole, whether we have this five minutes thing, this is kind of a little point, so just a bar.
Well, it might not be, in that when you, when you add that to item four, the list of things that follows is intended to be read as a list of the kinds of things that Committee of the Whole would discuss in camera, and while it doesn't limit our ability to discuss other things in camera, the inference is if it's not that kind of thing, it shouldn't be in camera. And so we're supposed to use some discretion on, I would agree, almost any reason we would ever have a Committee of the Whole meeting would be to discuss something like this, but we're still, if it doesn't have to be, we're not supposed to be. And Trustee, or, sorry, Superintendent Bartlett also checked on how other school, how other boards are interpreting Committee of the Whole, as to whether, you checked this with somebody first, right?
Well, you talked to Heather.
Heather, she said if you're doing things in, in camera, always declare that they're in camera. I never even thought about the whole minute situation. I mean, we've had so very few, yeah, Committee of the Whole meetings.
Couple of years, maybe so.
And they really don't have a few in camera. So maybe the whole was for watching.
Yeah. But it, but it makes sense to actually know that it's, state that it's on camera, instead of taking it for granted.
So is the other question then, do I need to consult with Heather to ask her during Committee of the Whole meet, minutes, or meetings, do minutes need to be recorded and made public if the issue's not in camera? That I'm not sure about.
Yeah, so the issue's not in camera.
Because.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing a series of minutes that say, and we move in camera, and we move out of camera.
Yeah. I mean, in some places where geography is, is a very big thing, like when you have a smaller school division, but you have, they meet only at a board level once a month, and then they meet as a committee another time, and a lot of the work is done in committee, and it's because of the travel situation, right? So they only meet once a month, and a lot of stuff is done at the committee level, so. I mean, I could certainly, I don't know how.
Well, I think we'd have to have minutes, because you're not, if you have to declare you're going in camera, you have to have minutes to record that you're going in camera. I mean, you do.
And with Dawn just suggesting, you have the minutes would look like at such and such a time, going in camera, and such and such a time, came out of camera.
Well, you do have to have the minutes saying that you are in camera in order to prevent.
I'm just thinking, should they be handled the same way we handle our committee meeting minutes?
Yeah.
I like what we do with those ones.
Are they in camera?
They're not.
Awesome. Well, it's very different than the hula-hooping. That's something totally different. This is the traditional Indigenous hoop dance, and it's been around for time immemorial. No one really knows when exactly it started or where it came from, and so many different nations have so many different stories, different teachings, different origins of where this hoop came from and what it means. So today I'll be sharing the teachings that were passed down to me when I first started learning, and I started dancing this dance about twelve years ago. Time goes by way too fast. Please enjoy your childhood, children, because time goes by really fast and you grow really fast. But I've been dancing this dance for twelve years now, and the teachings I was given was that it's a healing dance and it's a storytelling dance. And so a long time ago, there used to be medicine men, medicine women, people in the community who had had the ability to heal people, who would go out into the bush and make these hoops out of more natural materials, like from redwood branches or some kind of flexible branch, and they would come back to the community and through, through the drumming, through connecting with Mother Earth, with the ground, through pressing that hoop through their body, through their prayers that they would be making, they would be able to bring healing to themselves as dancers, or to their friends and their family around them, or even to their communities and their nations as a larger whole. And so it's a very, it's a very sacred dance in that way, and it originated from ceremony. We used to dance this as a ceremonial type of dance. And so I hold that teaching very near and dear, near and dear to my heart, that it brings a lot of healing, and I dance for each and every one of you out there who are watching, and I'll be thinking and praying for you and your families, and for your wellness, and for moving forward in the next days, years, with that love in your heart and with, just on a good road. And it's also a storytelling dance, too, so we make different formations, many different designs, many different intricate fancy movements to tell a story. So each and every hoop dancer is very, very different, because they all have their own stories to tell, right? And so you'll see many different things, you have to use your imagination. I might make a bird, I might make the world, I might make a flower, or a caterpillar, or a tiger, whatever you see is what you see, and that's what you were meant to see in this dance. So it's a very exciting dance, and it's very high energy. And also on my hoop, it also symbolizes the journey in our circle of life, because the hoop itself is a circle, right? And on my hoop, I have the four directions taped onto this hoop, and that symbolizes that medicine wheel teaching, that us as First Nations people really keep in mind in, in that journey that we take in our life. And in each of those directions, we have a teaching that, that we can take in moving forward in our decisions in life. So in one direction, it brings the teaching of the physical moment, so that's like our present, this present moment we're sharing all together right now, and that's also our physical sacred bodies, learning how to keep our physical bodies always in motion, always healthy, balanced, looked after, positive. We wanna only be entering all the good stuff, like all this beautiful water that we're keeping ourselves hydrated with, because water brings us life, and we are eighty percent water, ninety percent water, whatever the statistic is, but always keeping ourselves healthy. And then we move into the next direction, which then moves into our mind, which is our brain, and always learning new things, always expanding and opening our minds, always keeping positive thoughts, and keeping our mind balanced and healthy as well. Then we move into the next direction, which teaches us about the emotions, which is if we're happy, or sad, or excited, what we're feeling, always leading with that, that emotion, with that feeling, making sure that we check in with our heart space first to make sure it feels good. And then we move into the last direction, which is spiritual, so the spirit side of life. And that can, that can be interpreted in many different ways, because there's so many different ways you can access spirit. It could be through dancing, it could be through singing, it could be through spending time with community or family and friends, it could be a religious belief you were given growing up, or a value or a belief you were given growing up, like sharing, or respecting one another, whatever makes you feel connected to your inner divine spirit, or maybe even something larger than yourself, is what fits in that direction. And so with all of those four directions in mind, we can lead a more balanced, healthy lifestyle throughout our journey in the circle of life. Kind of a deep metaphorical, nice little deep meaning of the hoop. But with that being said, now that the talking is a little over, now you know the story and all the deeper meanings behind what this hoop means, now I need two brave volunteers who wanna try, and I want someone who looks like excited, but like also very like quiet and like respectful, so let's do, how about you in the back right there, the girl in the glasses? Nope, yes, yes, you. So one, and I need a boy. How about you in the red right there? You look excited. Yes. Okay, so these are our future champion hoop dancers making their way up to the stage. So ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls and children of all ages, my name is Shanley Spence, I'll be your host today here in this beautiful territory, and I'm joined by two champion hoop dancers, so I'm gonna get them to introduce themselves. Please say your name, your age, and how you're feeling today.
Hi, I'm Lisa, and I'm ten, and I really feel good today.
Woo, let's give Lisa a round of applause.
Clayton Forre, I'm ten, and I'm feeling really excited.
Lincoln, and he's excited, round of applause. Clayton, sorry, Clayton.
L E S A, not L I S A.
Oh, okay. All right, so I'm gonna give these guys three hoops each, and I'm gonna show them how to make a formation. Okay, so I'm gonna show these guys how to make the baby bird or the baby eagle. Do you think they can do it? Oh, come on, they need more excitement than that. Do you think they can do it?
Yeah.
Do you guys think you can do it? I think you can do it. Okay, so take one hoop, emphasis optional, put it diagonally across your body like a sash, or a very fashionable over-the-shoulder purse. Grab a second hoop, crisscross it the other way, so now you have a hoop on each shoulder, and you have like a shield thing going on, arms out the sides. Perfect, perfect. Third one goes over top, and then you bring your hands up the side, around, hold on to the bottom. Awesome, stay like that, don't move, stay like that, don't move, hold on to that nice and tight, even if they move, hold on to that nice and tight. And now they're in their little eggshells, and they're ready to hatch out into the world and to the beautiful birds that they are. So now what you're gonna do is you're gonna bring your head through all the hoops and spread your wings. Looks pretty good, looks pretty good. And then once these birds get used to their wings, they can grow and expand into even a bigger bird. Whoa, what's happening? Evolving? That's the Pokemon term, right? Evolving? Awesome. So I think we're missing something, though. It's called the hoop dance, right? It's not just called the hoop. We need to dance now as well. So I'm gonna cue my drummer who's here today, which is my, his name is Mister iPhone, and he's gonna play a nice sacred song for us. And all you do, when you hear that drumbeat, you tap your toe. Tap your toe. Now flap your wings. Let's try a spin. Spin the other way for balance. Come up close, come up close, show the people. Let's do one more spin. Spin it out, spin it out. And when you hear that drumbeat stop, you're gonna strike a pose like that freeze dance. Ready? Oh, beautiful dabs in there, awesome. All right, so to get out of this bird now, without getting too tangled, what I do is I drop my extra wings, so these, yep, now you're back to three. Now what I do is I scrunch it behind my back, I show off my muscles, bring that back over top of my head, and step out. That was good, there you go. Awesome, good job. High fives before you go, high fives, you guys, good job. All right, you guys can go grab a seat, thanks for coming out. Oh, you are? Awesome, nice to meet you, thanks for coming up. Thanks for coming up. All right, who's ready to see some more dancing? They did pretty good, thank you guys for coming up and being brave. So I will set up my hoops now, and I'll get a song going. So I'll be dancing with eleven hoops today. Fun fact, the most someone's ever danced with is like eighty hoops. Don't ask me how they did that, because that's probably a lot of hoops all over your legs and your arms, and like holding a bunch of globes, but it's pretty amazing. I know I see many different intricate designs, many different animals, plants, things like that, and it's a very energetic dance, so if you see something you like, feel free to cheer, feel free to clap, have fun with it, maybe get up and dance along with me to the beat, whatever your spirit feels called to do, because I'm giving a lot of energy to you guys who are watching, so it's nice to get some energy back up here, and if you cheer loud enough, maybe I'll even dance a little harder. Deal? Okay, so with that being said, I'm also gonna be dancing again later around five o'clock, and I'll be explaining a little bit about the fancy shawl dance, and so I hope you'll be around later as well, and I'll be, I'll be around, so if you have any questions, if you wanna come meet me, please feel free to come and approach me, don't be shy, I'll be around. So I hope you enjoy my dance, and I will set up, and it will be a good time. So I hope you enjoy my dance and I will set up and it will be a good time.